So I'm gonna just hit pause right here. I'll come in and start it.
Council Finance Committee to order. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'm calling this workshop to order. The present are myself, Counselor Ingles, a member of the Finance Committee, as well as Counselor McGrathen, the Mayor, Roxanne Marr, Jim Mann, Ian Stammel, Steve Holyfield, and that's all I have. Can somebody add to that list if anybody else is in attendance?
Marcia's on.
Okay. How about Linda?
I don't see. I can't see who else is online.
I don't see Linda.
Okay. All right. We'll come back to it if I ever get my connection. So let's get started.
Hillary Evans is on right now.
Hillary Evans, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
No.
No? Okay. So we are going to start in with Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal Jim Mann, who is present with us, and we have, I believe you guys are showing ClearGov so we can see the Fire Marshal's budget. It's a very simple and easy budget. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, Jim, on telephone and fax service. We are presently at about half of the year's budget spent at $3,000, but we've increased the budget to $3,500. I was just curious about what's driving that.
Just cost increase. I think I'm gonna run out. So I went up a little bit on it. I've eliminated everything I can. I'm down to one fax machine versus four, but we're gonna go over this year, so I upped it a little bit.
All right. Well, you must have gotten some more invoices then. I'm showing as of 1231, we're 44%. So right about half.
Bill, I'm at 75, 86% right now.
Okay, so you're a little bit ahead now. Okay, thank you. Operating expenses are at 16%, and we budgeted $7,500. I'm wondering what, and also an increase of $8,000, so I'm curious about that.
I am. We upped it 500, 500 over what I did last year, and that's because I gotta buy some batteries and whatnot for the ESD. Some of this, I know I'm low, I've been sort of sitting on, you know, because I didn't know what costs were gonna be this year. I didn't know where we were going with the whole COVID thing, but I've cleaned up a good part of it. Yeah, so I've been sitting on it.
Okay. Last question is about training, meeting dues, subscriptions. That has historically been, it runs about 15,000 to 16,000. In F-20, we, I'm sorry, 15,000 to 16,000. In F-20, we budgeted, yeah, that's a lot of training. So we budgeted $2,000 in F-20, and we're upping that to $2,400, but only 9% of it is spent year-to-date as of 1231.
I didn't pay my NF, what happened? NFPA, we were always doing hard copy, like a lot of us, because it's easier when you're doing code research. Well, they stopped doing hard copy now, and it's all going online, so the cost went up, of course. So, yeah.
And that's annual.
That's annually. Yeah, it's horrible. And training, so far the town hasn't paid a penny for any of my training. I managed to mooch that for free, but it's all for NFPA stuff.
Wow.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's code books and NFPA codes.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Yeah, I'll get that bill here shortly, and that will take care of that line item, believe me.
I imagine so. Okay, that's all I had, Jim. Andre, do you have any questions?
No, this is a really small, you know, it's a short budget, like you said, so I think you covered it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I like, I like not to spend, but unfortunately, like I said, I'm sitting on some money right now just because I don't know where we're going, but what I can get back, I'll get back to it.
Okay. If, if you, if, I, I know you are, and we appreciate that. If you had to cut anything out of this budget, what, what would you cut? How much, how much would you reduce it?
If I had to wax something, I would go to telephone, because I can always transfer from operating.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I've done the last years, so not too big a deal.
We are hoping to cut fax service even further. Regina is looking into e-fax services, and that would be a significant reduction in townwide.
Right.
So, okay. Other counselors, people in the room, questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Jim. We appreciate what you do. Let's move on to Mr. Holyfield.
I have a question, Bill. This is Marcia.
Oh, go ahead, Marcia.
Did you want to ask Jim about his capital?
I did. Thank you for reminding me. Absolutely. Let me jump to that. Marcia, I'm looking. I don't see any line items for Jim.
Oh, I thought he had one for vehicle, for vehicle replacement. But I might be wrong.
I see Fire Chief vehicle. I don't see Fire Marshal.
What's that? Yeah, well, the same amount I put in last year. Marcia said she was gonna get it in there.
Oh, Marcia didn't do that.
That's why Bill doesn't see it.
Okay, um, well.
So that's the same amount as last year for vehicle replacement?
It was like two grand a year. Yeah, it was two grand. Just that way, we get the truck 10 years from now needs to be replaced. We have money in place, and we're not whacking out $30,000 or $50,000 at once.
Right.
I will add that today, Bill.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Marcia. Okay, we ready for Mr. Holyfield?
Emergency Management's first, isn't it?
Oh, that's you, Jim, huh? Yeah, yeah.
It's me. I did no increases. Everything's pretty much the same.
Let me get to it. Bear with me.
So on the same one?
Oh, there was a $300, $350 increase.
I saw 400 increase in operating.
Let me do my math.
Oh, yeah, it's, sorry. Glad to keep bonging up. I'm looking at it.
And the reason that that's low, we did no drills this year. We didn't do anything, but I'll eat some of this up because all the batteries and all the UPSs need to be replaced and a few other items. Plus, we have a drill coming up in May and June, so that's gonna take a while.
Well, at least we'll return this year's money, right?
Well, we get, we get a good hunk of that back from the state, so it's not too bad.
Of, of what? The batteries or the drills?
Well, through my EMPG, I can claim some of that's money and get money back from the state.
In the coming year's budget?
Yes. Every year.
Comes in through cap.
Do you know, okay.
What's that?
It comes in through capital, not the general fund.
You know what, Marcia? I actually do see, in the Excel sheet, I do see the Emergency Management does show a $350 increase, but in the ClearGov it shows four.
Yeah, it was four.
In the Excel, it looks like 2021 adopted. Is that $20,050?
2450.
Andre, what?
I'm not, I'm, um...
Are you talking about Sip?
Nope. I'm talking, I'm in the Mayor's budget in the Excel sheet, line 278.
Okay.
Yeah, don't you show $20,450?
Yep, for 2022, but then in ClearGov, wait a second.
In ClearGov, it shows 2450 also.
Wait a minute, where am I?
2450.
$20,450, right?
All right. My mistake. I might got my wires crossed or something.
It's all right. We'll get an electrician in.
Okay, so Jim, I think we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Steve, are you still with us?
Yep.
Holyfield? Okay.
Yeah. I'm here, Bill.
All right, Steve, thank you. So I, I always get confused between Jim and Steve and Emergency Management and Emergency Services. So are we looking at Emergency Management?
We are Admin Emergency Service.
Admin, okay, let me find that.
It's right under the Fire Marshal.
Oh, the, uh, the environment under the public safety employees.
Yes.
I didn't remember.
Yeah, last year was the first year. It used to be somewhere in Ledger, somewhere in Galesbury, and Marcia actually, at her suggestion, put everybody into the AES budget.
Well, it was talked about that. It used to be, you know, we had two guys there, two guys there, and then one guy was kind of a floater, and I guess now it's a full rotation.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, so we just decided to have it all. So that way, there was no confusion in allocation. That person A is supposed to be at Ledger, but they're really at Galesbury today or something like that. So that's why we ended up doing that.
It makes a, makes a lot of sense to put it in one account. Salary is salary, and, you know.
Yeah, so the only question I had was on operating expenses, Steve. Year-to-date as of the end of December was at 22%, and we budgeted $1350. So I'm wondering if that's an accurate number. Typically, it runs about that amount, so.
There's a lot more encumbered than is currently spent.
I'm sorry, you got stuck on there.
Yeah, there's a lot more encumbered.
Quick number crunch.
It sounds like somebody's in our meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can take a look here.
Hey, we get a quick, quick number crunch, number crunch?
Oh, we have, is that Robert McClure?
Nice, Gareth Bale.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, Gareth Bale.
World famous footballer.
Hey, Gareth here. Can we just get a quick number crunch there?
So we're seeing somebody in this meeting with a moniker of Bud 10. Could you let us know where you are?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the number.
Your voice is being distorted.
Yeah, we need a number crunch real, real quick there. Have you guys got a number crunch there?
I think you're in the wrong meeting.
Yeah.
No, no, this is the Town of Ledyon. I'm the accountant. I'm the accountant, and I was told to join the meeting to observe the number crunch.
You're from PWC.
What accountant is this?
PWC, Price Waterhouse.
And you're supposed to be auditing the Town of Ledger, is that correct?
Yes, it's a random audit.
No, we don't do random audits with Price Waterhouse. Please disconnect.
Yes, you do.
This sounds very much like a fraud. Please disconnect yourself.
This is not a fraud.
Oh, fraud idiot. This is Price Waterhouse.
Name some of the people in the Town of, name some people of the Town of Ledger, right now.
Jeff.
That's, that's completely...
What do you mean, name some people?
That's a complete load of politics. What are you talking about?
Name some people. All right, well, you got Roxanne, you got Bill, Bill, and you got Marcia. Was it Marcia?
Yeah, Marcia. Is Roxanne still in the room?
Yes.
Yep.
Disconnect these guys. You can, you can remove them from time.
This is the accountant. We need to be here.
No, you're not. No, you're full of shit. Cut it out.
No, no, we're the accountant. Yo, we're the accountant, yo!
Get him out of here. Get him out of here.
Number crunch real quick, and you guys better get me that number crunch, all right? Because I'm waiting, and I've been waiting for a long time for this number crunch.
Yeah, number crunch doesn't even make sense.
No, it does.
Somebody, did somebody work on this?
Get him out of here.
I thought it was Simon. I threw off Simon. Oh, I threw off Simon. I thought I threw off.
That's all right. They're probably all...
Just get him out of here. Get him out of here. Get that number crunch in here and get him out of here. Get that number crunch. That's the main thing. The main thing is the number crunch.
We gotta get another crunch.
We gotta get that number crunch, guys. It is so important to get that number crunch.
Goodbye, guys. Goodbye.
Okay, I think that's all on them now. Is this Robert McClure? Is he one of our people?
Not to my knowledge.
I don't know.
Get him out. He can come back.
I'm gonna remove him too.
All right, thank you.
Wow.
Good job, Rox.
Apparently I picked a late meeting to come to.
All right, give us that number crunch now.
Okay, so your number crunch. So what I was, what I was going to say with the operating expenses, which was what you had asked about, there's a lot more encumbered right now than is spent. That includes town cellphone, that includes a couple other things that we have for routine monthly expenses, and we've gone up because we anticipate, you know, likely cellphone service is probably gonna go up. So that's why I'd gone up to $50, figuring that spreads it out, you know, roughly $5 a month over the course of the year. So I'm not sure that that $290.52, I know we've spent more than that, more than that in cellphone service already this year.
Yeah, that was as of 1231, 20.
Yeah.
The current year-to-date is $531.87 with an encumbered amount of $618.13.
I'm right close to the end. So, so what I do is I, I open up, I don't wanna call them placeholders, because I'm not sure if that's the right number or not, but I open up a purchase order for like my town credit card to cover if we have expenses on that. So right now, there's 200 encumbered but not spent on that. There's 750 or 850, I think, for cellphone service, and then there's a small one for WB Mason, mostly what I spend for office supplies. So we've had a little bit there with trying to get a couple, you know, like webcams and stuff to be able to do with the online meetings and all that. So, you know, I don't know if I'll spend all that or not, but, you know, right now I think we're actually at like, what, 90%, at least encumbered with the ID subsides. Yeah, pretty close to that. So, so that'll be likely spent, and that number will certainly come up as the bills continue to get paid.
So that's in the operating expenses, Steve. If I'm looking at my own spreadsheet, and my only question, I think we just covered, was about operating expenses for Admin Emergency Services, and it's now, the amount is up. It's no longer 22% spent, and there's also an amount encumbered. I didn't catch the amount, but it sounds like that we're gonna come in close on that one, so.
I think he answered we're like 80, 85% encumbered right now, so.
Well, we're between spent and encumbered by 85%.
85%, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
And like I said, some of that's purchase orders to cover my cellphone for the rest of the year and DB Mason for the rest of the year, and we've had a couple little adjustments on that, so. Yes. That's the contract with American Ambulance, and that's that fixed rate that we pay for the foreseeable future. Yeah, that's the American ambulance.
Steve, how does that number compare to LV in a given year? I don't even know if that's an apples-to-apples comparison.
I haven't looked at a lot of the stuff that Russ had, but I, my understanding is that the $75,000 is significantly cheaper than LV's operating minus their revenues. And the Mayor would actually have a lot more information.
The other critical metric to it involves the 65% to 70% turnout, two calls versus Americans 100% at every call, and I think we had another accident with down Route 12 recently where there might have been three or four transports.
Yeah.
They did them all.
And we've been, I, I keep my eyes, and the Mayor gets copied on all of it. I'm reviewing the call stats every month. Our average response time is like eight and a half minutes in town, and it's a little lower than that on this half of town, and it's a little higher on the Galesbury half. They're averaging about 10 minutes to Galesbury. So, you know, the service really on that initial ambulance. And honestly, we haven't really had any issues on the second, third, and fourth calls. We've had a bunch of those lately. The service has been very, very good, and the communication has been very, very good with, you know, their staff. If there is ever an issue, either of the Fire Chiefs, myself, and the Mayor, we all have the ability to reach out and talk with American and solve things very, very quickly. So it's been good.
Yeah, pre-COVID, they would, they would just come right in. So we'd have a sit-down with them, go over the data and everything, and I'm sure we'll get back to that.
Yep.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Very pleased with that so far.
Okay, the only other thing I had was in the SIP, Steve. We've got fire apparatus replacement and AEDs. And I actually don't have any question about that. I'm just noting that's what, that's what we have. And the amount you requested was what the Mayor approved.
Exactly. And that's up a little over last year, but, you know, we have those built-ins as far as the percentage increases to try to keep up with inflation and the cost of the fire apparatus replacement in general, which a lot of times is driven by their, their market. You know, everything's more expensive this year because there's been such challenges with the supply chain. So luckily, we don't have any apparatus that we really have to replace this year, but those numbers certainly shot up, and hopefully they'll kind of flatline here for a little bit, and maybe even recede as we move forward.
Very good. Am I missing anything?
Yeah, we've got, I think, 28 AEDs in town, so we're trying to put money away to make sure that when we need to upgrade those to a new model, we can upgrade all of them and not have to play games with, I need to stock two separate types of batteries, two separate types of pads. And we did, we did pull a little bit of money out of that this year because a lot of the pads expired and a lot of the batteries need to get replaced. So we did have a little bit of an expenditure this year. I think it was right around $2,000, but, you know, all the AEDs in town, like the ones in my cabinet over here, have been serviced this year, and I keep an eye on those as well.
And how many did you say we have?
I think it's 20, either 28 or 38. I'd have to look on my stuff, which I probably don't have with me, but...
So where would they be? They're all in the schools, I would imagine, Senior Center.
Town Hall, Town Hall Annex, both libraries, Senior Center, multiple ones in different schools. The fire companies each have multiples. The Police Department has four, I believe. I think we have one spare in case one of them has an issue and we need to send it out for repair. We can backfill and take care of that. And that has, you know, they have the actual electrode pads inside them, which are only good for about two years, and then the batteries are good for two to three years. So, you know, part of our putting money away is to be able to service those things because it used to, I believe, come from the ambulance, but with us not having an ambulance, it had to come from, from somewhere. So it got kind of shifted under my purview.
So, okay, so here's a, forgive me if this is a stupid question. So is it, is it just the ambulance workers who are qualified to use that, or are there people in each building who are trained to use it?
So here's the interesting one. Anybody that has a CPR card has probably had training in using one of those. Also, when dispatch takes the phone call, they actually have their emergency medical dispatch card set that they go through, and as soon as they identify somebody has no pulse and is not breathing, they can actually provide instructions over the phone from the dispatch center on, hey, get that, open it up, turn it on, put the pads here, and they can actually assist over the phone with defibrillation, so.
Most of them have pictures and diagrams. It's very, very easy to use. I was a lifeguard for like 10 years.
I think every facility has some, at least one somebody, if not more, that is trained to use it. Every building has.
And that's something, hopefully after COVID, maybe we can work with American to have a class for those that haven't had it in order to get some CPR cards out.
Yeah.
You know, that, that was part of the contract, is that they've got a reasonable price for doing that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. I have no other question. Anyone else?
No, sir.
All right. And we are still sort of on time, amazingly.
I'm gonna head to the back of the room so that Ledger can move in. We'll rotate the COVID assistance to help.
So was that Todd Willis? He walked by the camera. I can only see his hands.
It is Todd Willis. Chief, chief man could not agree. Good, how are you?
Good. Thanks for coming.
Good.
Get organized here. Give me a second.
No, he hasn't been in today.
So the first question I had, Todd, on training.
Yeah.
You're at 48% for the year as of 1231. You may be a little further ahead than that. And my question was, we, we had been running in fiscal '20, we budgeted $9,000. '21, we budgeted $9,000, and this year up to $13,000. So I was curious for the reason for the increase.
The increase is we've been getting, we're getting some new firefighters in. We've been doing a really good job with, you know, trying to get people in. The training costs more right now to get firefighters through Fire One and Fire Two. We had three or four members take Fire One this past year. We've had some members take EMT and MR, EMR. So, you know, when years pass, you know, it kind of ebbs and flows a little bit with, with the training depending on our, on our membership. So, you know, we do have some new members coming in, so we feel that those items are gonna go up a little bit.
Well, that's, that's the answer I was hoping for. That's good news. Thank you. Excellent. Next question on fire hose appliance testing. Last year, we budgeted $1,000, and none has been spent as of 1231. Is there a plan to get that spent?
Yeah, I'm actually not sure.
Do you second now, Bill?
I think we just may have had the appliances done maybe in February or January. I know, I'm not sure where we stand with that, to be honest with you, but I, I know I could have sworn it was just done, so.
I think we try to do it when hose testing starts.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where that stands or why that hasn't been...
We have 350 encumbered, nothing spent yet. So if there might be an invoice sitting with Cheryl currently.
It could be.
Good. Okay, thank you. Next... Um, next question is cellphone service. That's a zero. Um, I'm thinking there must be some bills in there somewhere. We budgeted two thousand, but hence.
Yeah, that's actually a stipend that gets issued to myself and John, which.
Okay.
Bill, he usually does that towards the end of the year as a, as a one-type stipend to cover the, the two chiefs and possibly the captain, I don't look back, but their, their cellphone uses, because they don't have town phones.
Sure.
I believe.
Sure.
So, it's a little money in there to reimburse them for the amount of time that they spend on, or the, the effort of spending all that on there.
And make sure that goes in as a reimbursement, otherwise you're gonna have to claim it.
Gotcha.
Have to say reimbursement.
Yep, I think it does, actually.
Okay, I probably learned that last year, too, and forgot it. Um, next one, operating expenses. We're running at thirty-four percent of budget, which was seventy-two hundred, and the budget has increased to eighty-two hundred, so I was curious about the reason for that.
I know we've been, we've incurred some expenses, obviously from COVID, we've incurred some expenses, you know, when we started, when we took over from, um, when American took over, we incurred some expenses that LV's used to cover, so.
Oh, yeah.
We've been trying that, um, reimbursed.
You guys just bought a new foregasm, maybe.
Yeah, we just bought a new meter, so it's, um, I'm assuming that that's the reason.
You're currently, as of today, at thirty-two seventy spent and eleven fifty encumbered.
I, I believe John was sitting on a little bit of that money, trying to not spend it because we weren't sure what was going on with, uh, vehicle repairs and how tight that was getting, so hoping, hoping we can fix that this week, and then maybe he can get what he needs for the rest of the year as far as, uh, any new equipment that they need and.
Yep.
Care of that, but I had urged him to kind of reserve and underspend those for now, just not knowing where we were going.
Yep, got it. So the reason for the request, the, the increased request was for the, uh, taking over from American, have I got that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, um. Next one, I'm not sure why I asked this, because I don't normally ask about uniforms, but, but, uh, uniform expense was at twenty-nine percent in December, and I know those are an important part of, of, uh, incentives.
We usually, a lot of times those are spent in the, in the springtime. We try to hang on to some of that money towards the end of the budget season, just in case, um, and, you know, in the springtime, we end up, you know, spending more of that money, that's probably why it hasn't been spent now.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah, okay, yes, Steve.
Can you, can you hear me? Okay, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, so part of the stuff with the uniforms is he did do a couple purchase orders for career staff uniforms out of that, but a lot of that is, uh, consumable PPEs, so things like gloves and boots and hoods and helmets, I think, are usually out of that. And he hasn't spent anything on that yet this year, but I would anticipate in the springtime, John will probably have to do some restock with some gloves and, and those sorts of things, so you'll see that account start to go up.
Got it.
And that's a little bit different than the capital PPE, because that's where we buy the physical turnout gear, like the pants and coats out of.
Got it.
Um, as opposed to the uniform and protective clothing.
Okay, thank you.
A cer- a certain percentage of that also is, um, comes out of payroll.
Yeah.
And so it's a bi-weekly payroll thing as well, so that will trickle down over the course of the end of the year here.
That uniform cleaning that they get.
Isn't it? I forget how much.
It's like four dollars a day per night, I think, or per shift.
That sounds better. Yeah.
Better part, the better part of two hundred dollars of per paycheck.
Okay. Under questions?
No, you're covering it.
Okay. Um, the other thing I would ask you, Todd, and, and I hate to ask this question of volunteers, but, um, gotta do my job. If you had to remove or reduce something, what, where would you cut money?
Hmm. It's always a tough question.
Well, you don't, you don't have to answer now. If you can think about that and come back to us with any, any recommendations, as, as usual, we're looking for anything we can do.
Yep.
And again, hate to ask volunteers to do that, because we appreciate how much you guys saved the town. Um, ready to look at SIP?
What's that?
Capital.
Um, I'm, I'm looking at, at SIP now.
Do you have the capital or?
Yeah, John, it's printed.
Thank you. Let me know when you're ready. Yes, okay. Uh, first question was about hi- about fire hose. Um, is that to, is that a capital account to purchase replacement fire hose?
Yes, every year, you know, we get a, seems like we get a couple lengths that don't pass testing, so it's just, uh, basically, we're always getting, trying to keep it updated.
Yep, got it. Okay. Um, next one, I think I may know the answer, but I'm gonna ask you guys, because I could be wrong, uh, about radios. The amount requested was six thousand, and the mayor approved five, or recommended five thousand. Is that connected to the grant application we're doing?
It, it could potentially be used as seat money for the grant. The other thing was that we had spoken, and in the event we don't get the grant, I encouraged the, the both departments to start putting away money to plan on doing it on a, on a cash basis out of C and R.
Got it.
So we start that account up and, and, you know, that, that's a huge dollar amount long-term, so hopefully, we do wind up, um, prevailing in the grant, but I, I figured at this point, we should start budgeting and get our foot in the, we need a budget appropriately, long-term with that.
Yep, okay. Alright, I don't have any other questions on capital. Anyone else in the room have questions?
My question is not really about the capital itself, but about, sorry, it's a really curiosity question. When you say the hose is two to five lengths, is a length a particular measurement, or you're just using it generically as?
Most lengths are fifty feet.
Okay.
So we have inch and three-quarter hose, which is the small, smaller stuff that we bring into the buildings with us. We have two and a half, which is a little bit bigger, we can use that for more flow. Then we have the, the larger, usually it's yellow, that you see when they tie into the hydrants, that's five-inch. Those lengths of five-inch are right around a thousand dollars per length. So if we have one that fails, we try to do things like, maybe we'll reduce it to twenty-five feet and put a coupling on it, but we still need to have a certain amount of hose on e- on each of the engines. So every time one of those fails, there's a fairly significant cost, so the idea is to look at what our quantity of hose is across both departments and start budgeting for replacement, and there's also updated standards that after a certain amount of time, those are not really preferred to have on the apparatus, so part of it's replacing older, out-of-date hose with newer stuff that can be maintained, and to try to keep those, those stocks kind of rotating as we go.
Got it, thank you.
And I noticed that it, it looks like the mayor equalized the request for the two departments, um, both, uh, for hose, both departments is now, they're both at two thousand dollars each. I don't have anything else, Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Alright, thanks. I want this back. Steve, you need to.
Oh, sure.
Miles, I'm good?
Damn, good.
Alright.
Thank you, Jeff. So did, did we change our order around? Did Chief Saponam again?
Yeah, here we did.
Chief Saponam is here.
Okay.
Well, it's Tony, I'm here.
Hi, Tony, I, once again, I can only see your hands. Hi back.
Yeah, I really like you.
Sir, Chief, thanks.
So, uh, Chief, thank you for coming. Uh, first question I have is regarding operating expenses, and it's probably gonna be a similar answer to, uh, what Ian provided us for Ledgerd Fire. Um, year-to-date as of December, operating expenses were twenty-four percent. Uh, which is low, and historically, we have run quite a bit higher, so we, we, uh, twenty-five, twenty-seven is about where we run this year, we're at twenty-five, six, which seems reasonable. Um, is there any, anything you can update us with, either on, uh, year-to-date expenses or do you think you'll come out?
Was there anything encumbered, Ian?
Uh, currently, your actuals to date are seven thousand six hundred sixty-one spent and seven thousand two hundred sixty-three encumbered, leaving an available eighty-five hundred, giving that, uh, including encumbrance, a sixty-three point seven percent used with the encumbrances.
Right, did you hear that, Counselor?
Yeah, is that as of end of, of, uh, February?
That's as of today.
As of today, okay.
So sixty, sixty-three percent encumbered?
Yep, so that's right about.
Again, we, 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 we just try to budget it so it lasts the entire year, make it as best possible to do that.
Absolutely.
There's always unforeseen circumstances at the end of the year.
Yep, okay. Um, the next question is about vehicle and equipment parts. Um, their request actually, um, that's twenty-one, we budgeted forty, forty-nine thousand, and the requested amount was forty-two, so I was curious about the reduction.
So, and that forty-nine thousand was a major, uh, purchase, I believe it was a generator for one of the vehicles?
Oh, yeah.
Or lighting system?
Yep.
So that's why it went up to forty-nine.
Got it.
The only, the only big change in this coming fiscal year would be tires for the tanker.
Right.
Which was a five-thousand-dollar request plus the budgeted line item, so it brings it up to forty-two.
Yep, okay, thank you for that.
Is that, is that?
Right, um.
Uh, is that repairs and maintenance in the, the vehicle, in the course?
Correct, yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
So on that, uh, the, the tire request, so this will be the third year we've applied, uh, asked for the money, uh, I figured the first year or two, it might get postponed because of the budget crisis, but now we're coming to the tire crisis.
Yeah.
So there, there is an unwritten, uh, rule, uh, either by National Fire Protection Association, uh, about tires that are old versus worn, so just like your tires in a car, they get dry-rotted.
Yep.
Uh, with the weight of sixty-two thousand pounds on a tanker, uh, we're just trying to replace them before we run into a problem.
Right, 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 yep.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of like when you have a trailer and, and, you know, they say that your trailer tires are good for seven years or ten years or whatever, and they may look good and they may not look dry-rotted, but given the, like the chief said, given the weight of that tanker and, you know, it, it's not gonna wear out tires, because it doesn't go on that, that many calls, it's not, uh, it's not like the ladder truck where it's dragging a, a scrub axle or anything. Um, the tires are probably gonna go bad before they're out of tread, and we're, we're approaching that point where now the tires are aged to the point where they need to, they really need to get replaced and then taken care of.
Understood. Thank you.
So then are we seeing, so I'm seeing a pretty big decrease in the percentage of the vehicle equipment and parts budget line item and an increase in new equipment, so is that where, is, is one accommodating for the other?
Well, but again, that, that decrease from forty-nine to forty-two was because last year, we got ten or fourteen thousand added to the budget because of a major purchase.
Their original request was thirty-five thousand for that line. There was an additional fourteen thousand, um, from a town council action letter for the, an additional appropriation after the.
Which brought it up to twenty-nine.
Got it, got it, got it.
So although it looks like a decrease, and it is, based on expenditures, there was a, there was a major reason for that.
Okay.
And that, their, that number will actually kind of go up again, because there was just the, uh, over-expended, um, motion.
That's correct.
Approved to cover those two major repairs on the engine, so.
Right, okay. And new equipment went up. Uh, what was it thinking there?
Uh, five hundred. We're just trying to pla- replace outdated, outdated equipment.
Okay.
It went up from five, we requested, uh, fifty-five hundred this year. Just trying to on, on an ongoing basis, get ahead of the game and replace outdated equipment.
Sure, understand. Um, so the tough question, Chief, if you had to reduce something, what would you reduce?
So number one, you can, you should not reduce anything that has to do with firefighter protective clothing, or, uh, consumables protective clothing, which is under the operating line item. Um, second, uh, we always take our vehicles second to the firefighter, so I would recommend not taking anything out of vehicles, so that gives you, and training as well, so that gives you the chief stipend, new equipment, uh, or telephone services. Those other three items, which is protective clothing, vehicle repair, and, uh, the volunteers, I would highly recommend, uh, not taking it from them.
Okay.
You can take it out of my chief's line item.
No, we are hoping to reduce pack service costs, uh, by, uh, Regina is looking into, uh, uh, online pack services to get rid of some, some more of our pack machines, and it's not the machine, it's the telephone line that we pay for. So we're hoping that might get reduced at some point in the future, but no, no answer on that yet. Okay, um, let's take a look at, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just.
I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Just a reminder, we were talking last Wednesday about having the conversation about the vehicle repair and, and equipment, that now both departments have gotten to the point where that vehicle repairs, uh, funding from last year hasn't been enough to keep the apparatus on the road, so definitely s- something to think about as we're reviewing this, that.
Yeah, good point.
Consistently overspending or moving money from other accounts to try to cover that, and, and so that, those slices of pie are changing sizes within each fire department's budget.
Understood. Thank you.
And the, the perfect example of that, the perfect example of that is this year, when we had to remove the radiator from the ladder truck, send it out for repair, that was a seventy-two hundred dollar repair, one repair for one vehicle, uh, and it was a ladder truck, which is important. And, and again, it was, it was extremely costly, so that really cut into the budget for the, for the, for the year.
We, we remember.
Yep, I know.
We, we also, uh, you know, we said at that meeting that, you know, we saved a lot of money by buying a demo that's a small amount to pay.
That's correct, we went out and, uh, bought a million-dollar vehicle for seven twenty-nine, so.
Yeah.
It sounds like a lot of money, but it was several hundred thousand dollar savings.
Yep, exactly. Um, Counselor Engels, do you have questions?
Uh, no.
Okay, let's move on to SIP then, capital. And let me know when you're ready.
I think we're ready.
Okay. So, um, the first question is for the last line, we had, um, forty-five hundred dollar request for, uh, chief vehicle replacement, and I noticed we did not fund that, and I was curious about the reason.
So it was removed, um, by authorities higher than I. So I have a, I have a chief's vehicle, uh, and we bought it for six thousand dollars on Craigslist. The other fire chief does not have a chief's vehicle at their own request, so the mayor wants to try to make it the same between both of us. Chief Man has a higher stipend, Chief Man has a higher stipend, I have a lesser of a stipend, because I got a vehicle, so.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I just think it's a nice, it was a nice afforded benefit to the volunteers, um, I mean, the police chief is sitting here right next to me, and he gets paid pretty well, and he gets a car. Hi, Chief, see you over there.
No comment, Chief.
Alright, um, hoses, we already covered, um.
Yeah, hose, so just, just so, you know, everybody in the room knows, so, uh, Steve Holleybeath was talking about it before, but, so what we're gonna try to do is replace outdated hose that the standard no longer fits. A secondary, um, there's an unwritten standard, which is if a vehicle, fire truck, went to an incident where there was chemicals involved, and it ruined all the holes in that fire truck, you should be able to come back to the firehouse, restock that fire truck with hose that's on a rack, ready to go. So we've been trying to build to that standard. It takes numerous years because of the cost of hose. So we've been trying to build to that standard, it takes numerous years, cause of the cost of hose. Again, Steve Holyfield mentioned, mentioned that, uh, one length of five inches is, uh, a thousand dollars. So how do, if you ru, if you ruin, uh, twelve hundred feet of fire hose, that's twelve thousand dollars. So we've been building up over the years, it is reduced this year, and, and, you know, that, that, that's fine, we're just gonna, we'll, we'll take the program out an extra year or two to try to be able to get to the standard, which is enough to get back to the firehouse and restock a fire truck. Worst case scenario.
Uh, that, that's good to know, Chief, where, where do we stand now in terms of inventory, what's, what's on the rack?
Uh-
We're getting close.
Getting close, we're between half and three quarters of what we need, sure.
Good, good to hear. Okay. Okay. Andre, any questions?
No, sir, I'm good.
And the only other reduction, I believe, was, uh, protective clothing, correct?
I saw that, yeah, and, and again, that's the same as, as, uh, Legerd, so I assume the mayor's trying to equalize.
Sure, yep, um, just for information purposes, for pants and a coat, it's, uh, twenty-five hundred bucks, and you haven't given the helm yet, or the boots, or the, or the, um, gloves, and so it's twenty-five hundred dollars, and if you have twenty, um, volunteers, you know, it could take ten years to replace them all, based on the ten thousand dollars a year, so. And there is, uh, OSHA has been coming around the state of Connecticut to firehouses, and if your gear is at ten years old, that's fine, if it's at eleven years old, you need to take it out of firefighting line items, right? So after ten years, basically, basically, an EMT can use it, or a non-trained firefighter can use it on the eleventh year, but prior to that, you get caught with it, you get fined with it, if you're trying to use it as firefighting gear. So we're just trying to get up to that standard that OSHA is enforcing.
Yeah, how, how many members do you have, Chief?
Uh, we had seventeen members this year qualify, I think it was, for the incentive, we have about twenty-five to twenty-eight.
Okay. How many members do we have in Legerd?
I don't know, I'd say they're somewhere around twelve to seventeen, that's just a guess.
They've actually had a fair amount of younger members start to sign up lately, and, uh, you know, the, I'll, I'll call it the sixteen to twenty demographics, they've been, they've been bolstering their numbers, so I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll continue into become qualified, certified interior firefighters to be able to help out.
Yeah, good. Okay. Um, uh, just asking, because if one department had twice as many members as the other, then we probably shouldn't be equalizing protective equipment, so.
Very good, very good thought, yes, I, I, we'd have to, uh, check out our, the membership, and it also, it also, remember, um, we use it to purchase for the five career guys as well, comes out of that line item.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, I don't have anything else. Thank you, Chief, appreciate you being here, and we thank, thank you and your department for what all, both departments do.
All right, you're welcome.
Good luck, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for that conversation.
Well, did that for me, thank you very much.
Bye.
Yeah.
We're gonna get out of here.
ACO first, right?
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Andre, I forgot to ask, um, is someone in the room keeping attendance? I have not been. I could probably reconstruct for them.
I'm keeping attendance.
Roxanne.
I'm keeping attendance.
Wonderful, but, thank you, Roxanne. So I, I think I saw the chief, I think I saw Christina, uh, the lieutenant, and I think I see Paula Smith, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's right.
All right. Thank you all for coming.
Roxanne, did you let Bill know that?
No.
Okay. Bill? Roxanne just informed that Don Steinhop has rescheduled until Thursday.
Okay. Thank you, Andre, thank you, Roxanne. He's probably out there investigating those, uh, Zoom hackers.
Probably.
We're, we're on that rate after we get out of here, Bill.
(laughing).
That'll be fun to watch.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to flag on, though.
Yeah, I heard, I heard. Um, we just wanted to, just, um, again, uh, wanted to make a real quick, uh, presentation about animal control, there really isn't a, a lot to change in, in the budget. I have Christina here, um, as always, she's done a terrific, terrific job, we have a, um, newer, uh, part-time animal control officer, Heather, Heather Haddon, and she is also, um, terrific, reliable, and, um, things have really, um, stabilized, and it's, uh, it's going very well. Um, as it relates to specific budget, this is, it's, it's pretty much, um, the, the same as it's been, um, there, I don't think we ended up with a, uh, uh, percentage increase, Mayor? Am I, am I right on that?
Correct.
Well, absolutely, sure.
Yeah. Um, one thing, there's a couple of things we wanted to bring, um, in, if you, if you want to go to SIP, um, on this, or you wanna go to SIP after, on everything, um-
Oh, go ahead, we can do that.
We've been saving, okay, we've been saving for the ACO vehicle, um, and, um, currently, the balance in the account is, uh, twenty-two thousand and change, with an additional, um, five thousand dollar, uh, appropriation, which is what we asked for this year, again, in this, in the reserve fund, um, we think we'll be able to execute this year, on buying a, a more suitable, suitable vehicle, um, that's all-wheel drive, um, potentially a used SUV, um, something that we can work, work within the budget, makes it easier for Christina and Heather to, uh, get, get from place to place. Um, yeah, four-wheel drive in the snow, um, she, she had an incident, an incident in the last storm where Sean had to assist her, um, in the two-wheel drive van. Um, so, um, that's one of the big, uh, again, one of the, one of the things I wanted to highlight as it relates to the, uh, to the budget here, as well as, um, I believe, it brought to my attention, that, uh, minimum wage in Connecticut is, is going to, uh, thirteen dollars on July one, and, um, the, our part-time ACO currently makes twelve ninety-one, I don't know if that's a bigger, um, discussion for, for Don and company, or, um, what, what that would look like, but we wanted to, um, at least bring that to the attention of the, uh, finance committee, uh, is that.
Okay.
Um, and, other than that, there really, there really isn't much, uh, much change, again, uh, all compliments to Christina, the, the relationships that she's built in the, with the, um, the ACO community, as well as the animal lover community, and the veterinary community has been, has been amazing. Our, um, w- we benefit greatly from donations, uh, of both food and leashes and crates and, uh, a- and anything that, that, uh, could be needed, as well, as well as the fund that continues to get, um, supplemented at All Friends, that helps, uh, def- defray the medical expenses for the dogs and cats and other animals that we have in. So, um, you wanna add anything, Christina, I just-
No, chief, I guess the big thing that I had brought up to Chief this year was, uh, about the minimum wage for, for our assistance. They should definitely be making more than minimum wage, so.
That is one of the challenges we've been anticipating, so thank you for bringing that up. Um, so, um, I, I also wanna comment that, uh, quite a few years ago now, we had, uh, we were looking at the, the, uh, Legerd, uh, ACO kennel, or the, the kennel, and, uh, we met with some supporters of animals and pets, and suggested to them that, uh, a grassroots organization raising funds to support the, um, the department, uh, would go a long way to keeping the department, and I just wanna recognize, uh, and, and reiterate what the chief said about how much money is raised by the friends of the community, if you will, for those pets, and Chain is one of those organizations, and they do a fantastic job, so we appreciate what they do to reduce our, our expenses.
Absolutely.
And, and we're also happy to have Christina back. Um, so, so the, uh, expenses brings me to my question, um, operating expenses for animal control was at eighteen percent at the end of December. So I'm curious about whether that number has gone up and why it's so low.
Sure, um, so, Bill, uh, the budget line is at, uh, is seventy-two hundred, um-
Yep.
Again, the, all, all of the, um, upkeep and maintenance of the facility comes out of that line item now. Um, so the, the things that Sean needs, et cetera, the prevent, preventive maintenance on the heating and cooling systems, all, every, everything is now funded out of that one single line, so, um, power, et cetera, so, so we, um, right now, as it stands, we're, in, as far as encumbrance, we're at, uh, with encumbrance and expenditure, at sixty-six point eight percent.
Okay.
Uh, and, and that's right about on the money right now, uh, where we should be in the fiscal year, and I think there's additional, um, preventive maintenance that Sean gets done in the spring, um, on the systems, um. So, I, I, I think that number's been, uh, pretty true, um, throughout the past, uh, couple of years.
It has, yeah.
In nineteen, there was actually additional appropriation for seventeen hundred dollars to cover additional expenses, it looks like.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, seventy-two, is that right?
Yeah, and the, and the budget, um, right now, in, in total is, uh, seventy point three percent, so we're, we're pretty much on the money, I think, as, as it relates to where we need to be, um, at this point in the fiscal year.
Yep, agreed, okay. Um, Andre, any questions?
I have a, again, my question is less budget-related and more curiosity question. Um, so you have a relationship with All Friends in Norwich, I'm curious, Legerd has two vets, in, you know, one in, one is Legerd, one in Galesbury, is there a reason that there's, um, that we're more partnered with All Friends than a local vet?
That started before my time, um, and it's just kind of continued, um, All Friends not only gives us a good deal there, um, but they work with us as far as vouchers are concerned, um, and because of that relationship, we, I get a lot for free up there. Um, so not saying that we couldn't build that relationship with a vet here in town, um, Galesbury Vet, um, is just Dr. Haran, I don't think that they would be able to take us on, uh, just cause it's such a small practice. Um, I have spoken to Groton Legerd, and we do use them from time to time, just depending on what the situation, um, is. Um, but All Friends, it, they're just, they, it just, they just work well with us, um, I can call a friend or a vet at nine o'clock at night, cause I have a question, and I get my questions answered for free, you know, right back, so, um, it's worth it to, it's worth it for me to stay up there, even after my, I say my two months sabbatical when I left here and went to work for them for a couple of months, um, and came back, uh, they've still been great to work with, so, um, and they're the ones that hold our autumn fund, um, that, so we have our, we have our accounts set up there also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, and that was, you know, it's not saying we couldn't build a relationship like that somewhere else, but so far-
I, I wondered if maybe it was just because of the size of the practice, because I'm aware that both, both of these are smaller practices, but I, I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, and they change their vets from time to time up there, just depends when people leave, but, um, but it certainly helps that the size of the practice is the way that it is. We can make a call and get in there that day or the very next day for appointments, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm all set, Bill.
Bill's not, cause I, um-
You gotta take a little break.
Sorry, I bounced, I was muted the whole time, are we taking a break, I miss what's going on there.
We're good.
No, we were waiting for you. We thought you were taking another call.
No. My, uh, my, my AirPods have died, uh, my internet is bouncing, miss you guys.
Oh, gosh, so, I think we're done with ACO.
All right, we are. So thank you, Christina, let's move on, I think, uh, Paula Smith is next.
Yeah.
Volunteer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank Christina.
Okay, um, I'm ready when you are, Paula.
All right, so I think this year, um, you know, we've transitioned to where we have eight people on, which is actually very good, because the amount of activity level in the center, even with the COVID crisis, uh, has actually continued to increase steadily every year. So we've actually been pretty, um, consistent with the budget, you know, we've tried to minimize, uh, the expenses that we actually put out, um, and I think that we've actually done a pretty good job of, uh, maintaining that consistency and providing the excellent service that all the dispatchers do, uh, in comparison with other centers around the area, so. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of this or not, but we actually pride ourselves in that one-stop shop, and we've actually transferred people on nine-one-one to London, England, Dowling, Nova Scotia, Van Nuys, California, just to name a few of them, so, anybody that needs help, we get them where they need to go.
So, can you build that out for me, what would that look like?
We actually get a nine-one-one call, maybe it's a Legerd resident who maybe was talking to a relative in another country or another part of the United States, and we do the research, get the phone number, and through the nine-one-one system, we can actually transfer them right to that, uh, emergency center.
So you might get a call from someone in Legerd who's got an emergency with somebody in, all right, so Van Nuys, you mentioned.
Yeah.
So the emergency's in Van Nuys, but someone in Legerd calls you for help, and you-
We actually can transfer them right to, uh, we usually use the police department, cause the police department is consistent, and the reason for that is because, have, we get away from Connecticut, there are so many privatized ambulances and fire, um, and we've, uh, like I said, we've sent it to Dowling, Nova Scotia, for somebody who was on the phone talking to their friend, and the friend had some type of seizure and, uh, went unconscious, so.
Wow, that is wild. Oh, my goodness.
I think, uh, I think they do a great job in there, um, one, one thing, uh, since I've, in chief, PD's been independent, we've been working toward the, the two people in the chairs at all times, um, we've been able to achieve that with, uh, a schedule change, uh, contractual, um, negotiations, and, and, um, so as of right now, we're fully staffed with two people in chairs at all times, uh, twenty-four, seven, and, um, it's, it's needed, because we've had, um, simultaneous multiple emergencies come in, you know, bu, um, both police fire EMS, um, it's been, um, super busy for, for that, for the dispatchers, and, uh, we, we've brought out some great new people, um, they're all doing very well, learning, um, learning the job, and, so, right now, we're staffed out with eight full-time people, they've recently gone to a, um, a pitman schedule, which is twelve-hour shifts. Um, so, one of the things that, uh, one of the challenges that we had, uh, both, both these past two fiscal years, was actually having full-time staff and having people leave, and, um, so you can see that overtime is over expended right now, as, as of this point in the fiscal year, and those, those things seem to have stabilized, but new schedule's only been in effect since December sixth of twenty-twenty, so we're just starting to try to figure out what all that is gonna look like, but looking at the, um, total hours of overtime that we spent in the prior year, uh, we, we based, we based the request on that. Um, right now, in, in operations, there is, um, extra, uh, appropriation in both, uh, full-time employees, public safety employees, and per diems, so we've got, we've had less pe, less people coming in per diem with the new, um, two people in the chairs situation, so be able to make those transfers after April first to balance out these accounts, um, and we should be, um, I, I think what we, what we've put, put forth for next fiscal year, I think is, is, is gonna work for us, uh, hopefully, that's provided that we stay fully staffed and, um, hopefully, everybody stays healthy, and, um, but as of right now, it's been, it, it's- but as of right now, it's been, it, it's, it's been a work in progress, and, and we've, we've made, we've made big progress, and, you know, in the whole staffing.
To, uh, to underscore what you just said, Chief, uh, th- this was a long time coming and a, a good plan, because in fiscal twenty, overtime was at seventy thousand dollars, and, uh, per diem wages were fifty-one thousand dollars that same year. Um, and have been high, as high as fifty-nine thousand, so this is, uh, a huge savings over a period of five years, which we appreciate. And, uh,
Thank you.
That's, uh, it's, it's happened because of the reorganization, rescheduling of the dispatchers, so, uh, and, and to your point, to get, get, uh, one experienced person in a chair at all times, and two people in total, so, good work, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm trying to think, was, was anything else remarkable in the, uh, actual requests, um, as it relates to, um, numbers that stood out? If, if you saw anything, please let me know, and I'll, uh, it's mo- it's mostly been in the staffing itself, um, and trying to balance between per diem, overtime, and full-time, full-timers, but I, I think, you know, if you look, uh, the, the, the total budget right now, expenditure-wise, is at sixty-six point nine, uh, and so we're right where we need to be, I just need to do some transfers after, uh, after April first, working with Ian and Marcia, to, um, balance up those, um, salary accounts. And I think we should be in good shape.
Okay. Um, one question I did have was about contract maintenance and leases, where, as of December, we're eighty-one percent expended. I was curious what's in there, because we, we've increased this year's budget as a result.
Yeah, so, um, I was just speaking to Paula about it, I got, I got noticed by, um, Central Square, which used to be Tri-Tech, IMC, they're now, they're now been bought out by an outfit named Cent- Central Square. They sent a letter with a five percent across the board, um, increase for all services, um,
Wow.
before I prepared, prepared the budget, so, we'll see a seven point six eight percent increase, uh, and, and they, they should all be broken down in, in, uh, in my request, but I tried to give us up to eighteen, nine, thirty-five, um, and, uh, I think there was a couple of other minor increases. Interaction Insight, who does our, um, does our, um, recording, our, our data recorders or our voice recorders. Um, those are the ones that I think stood out the most. Um, Communications Plus has been really good to us all throughout.
Yes.
They've been a great partner, so.
Just to give you an example, with Communications Plus, in respect to what they charge us per year for our maintenance of all of our base stations and many of our radios, a Groton Fire Alarm is well over thirty thousand, uh, for their general radio maintenance and upkeep, so we're getting a tremendous advantage to the town in respect to the amount of money that we're actually putting out for that.
Good to hear.
Yeah, they, they've been a great part, they've been a great, um, great team to work with over there. And they've, they've now done, they do all of our vehicle outfits for the police as well, because the quality of their work is just, it's been tremendous, and, uh, working with the, the larger MHQ, um, they used to do, but do their basics package, and they did what they, kind of what they wanted versus what, what we wanted and needed, so. Some, some of the stuff that we, we have in, in our, uh, in our cruiser capability right now is, is, it's really high-tech. We actually have the, the light, the lights are communicating with, with each other between two cars, so when the cruiser hits a certain speed, um, the rear, the rear flashing lights on the front car will actually, um, just go to a steady burn, and then the, the next cruiser in is not getting blinded, the, the lights are not flashing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It, it's really amazing how they, what the technology that they've, um,
Wow.
come up. Yeah, it's just, it's been really, uh, and, and they've been really great to work with, and, and also reasonably priced, so.
Yeah.
But I think they, I think they really do take pride in being a longtime partner of ours, and, um, they wanna give us good service and.
They were actually instrumental in hav- having us have the ability to take in, uh, build out our voter-receiver system at the towers too, because they got a bunch of free equipment of, for us from
Madison people.
Madison, the chief sold stomping grounds.
Paul, please.
So, that was a huge savings to be able to do that.
Thanks.
Did you see anything else, uh, couples that, uh, was coming up from?
Yeah, I had a question, I lost it, because I got, got excited listening to that. Uh, oh, yeah, so, Central Square. Um, a, a while back, we looked at IMC and, and decided to stay with them. Um, is, is that something we should look at again, given the, the price increase? Should we be looking at, at other competitors?
I, I think, uh, Elte, you wanna jump in on that? I, I, we, we think so.
Um, I would say, I would say yes. It would behoove us to start looking at another vendor, um, only because I don't know how long Central Square is going to stay in business.
Or support IMC.
Support IMC.
Support IMC, yeah.
They, they, they are already announced that they're not doing any more upgrades, so what we have now is what you get, um, and
Yeah.
you know, they'll still maintain it, but there's not, there's no updates, there's no, there's nothing new coming from them. Um, so, uh, you know, we could have another discussion offline, but it's, uh, there's a few other vendors out there, um, namely, which is NextGen, which is basically what most of the state and the state of Connecticut emergency services are using, so, that's what we were using before we went independent. It's just, uh, the cost to switch to them back then was astronomical.
Yeah.
Uh, as compared to IMC, so, it was a no-brainer for that, but yes, my, uh, my opinion would be, we should start researching it.
Yeah, so when, when one company buys another in the software industry and then announces they're not gonna do any more upgrades, that means they bought a competitor to take them out of the, out of the arena, and that means you're gonna have to shift to their software at great expense anyway. That's the way to do it.
That's the inform platform that they actually have, but most of the local dispatch centers in, in conjunction with P, the police departments are actually converging to the NextGen, so we think probably the ability to accomplish what the IMC did in respect to being able to communicate with other departments, obviously, if everybody was on NextGen, it would definitely, uh, assist in investigative portion of the PD side of it. Groton Fire Alarm actually recently, uh, converted to it as well, so, we're hoping that, uh, if we do go to that in the future, that those guys will have them all whipped into shape and get out all those cakes that we're having on the fire and EMS side of it, so.
Yep.
That's a knock on NextGen, is that they're law enforcement-heavy and, uh, firing EMS-oriented, so.
But we came from a DOS-based system, so if we can go from DOS to Windows or IMC, I guess we can pretty much accomplish anything, right?
Sounds like a good idea to me. So, sounds like an RFP is coming.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, there, there's a bunch of, there's a few different things we can, we're, we're gonna talk about as it relates to the, the region, I think, and more regional collaboration, so I think, um, we might wanna talk about the CAT RMS, um, aspect of that, as well as radios, et cetera, so.
Yep. Okay. So, speaking of that, let's take a look at capital. Um, we have a base station replacement reserve line.
Yeah, and we just had the basic, uh, eighty-five hundred dollars, um, request, which usually pays for about a half, uh, a half of a repair, so, depending on what, what comes up, um, we, um, we, sometimes, sometimes we need to spend a portion of that on, on a repair, but basically,
Yep.
um, it's usually about that number, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars, so we try to keep a reserve, um, to, um, supplement, to supplement that. And in this particular, uh, past fiscal year, we, we did, there was an appropriation from that line to, I believe, help out with the, um, uh,
The state.
the state radio bridge.
State radio bridge.
State radio bridge.
Yep, yep.
Um, you, we did take half of it from that, and then half of it came from emergency management, so.
Did I see that Groton just went to the, uh, the state police system?
Yes.
Saw something on the newspaper, yeah. You see it going that direction?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and, so we ha- we have the, um, kind of the brain of it right now in, in dispatch, um, so if, theoretically, if, um, if Groton Town came into town, um, they could speak with our officers, uh, o- over that, that mixer or that bridge, and, um, really, what the other departments around us, Stonington, Norwich, Groton Town and City, uh, as, as well as EB also has a, there's a, there's a station down there, or a tower site down there, they, um, they've built out the infrastructure to the point where I, uh, when they did our coverage map, it was about ninety-eight, ninety-eight percent coverage here in Ledger, um, so, we, we, we're in the place where we need just hardware, which would be, uh, mobile and portable radios, um,
Yep.
to be able to be, be completely, uh, on the system, we don't need any tower sites or any of that big-money work. Um,
Yep.
we just need, we just need the pieces now, so, and it, that, that's because of the other departments around us all, all saw the benefit of going to the system, and they, and they all spent, um, significant, significant money to, um, build out tower sites.
Yep.
So, we've always had the tower on Vinegar Hill, which is the state radio tower, and that helps out with Gale, Gales Ferry, we do have, uh, a, some dead spots with our, or tough spots with our, uh, UHF that we use, uh, so.
Part of the problem, Bill, is
Go ahead, Paula.
Part of the problem, part of the problem is that the tree cover, the trees in the area obviously get bigger, so
Yeah.
the more they grow, like, we have a pretty good problem with Route Twelve, which you would think would be a good area, but, um, there's a certain section between, like, military highway, um, and up past, um, the Village Pizza area, that we're actually still having some pretty good reception problems for them actually even being able to hear us.
Wow.
And also, uh, the PD, obviously, you know, a lot of the, the PD departments are on that system now, but we now have, uh, fire and EMS departments actually exploring, uh, going on to that system as well, and, um, we're gonna be having a public safety committee meeting in a few weeks after that, uh, coming up, we're gonna actually have a, a radio committee meeting where we're gonna talk about doing that, but the hopes is to be able to transition to that, if we decide to do that, uh, through grant money, and obviously, the more towns that get together, uh, that put in for grant money, the better the, the chance of them actually, uh, getting it.
Yeah, yeah. So, you, you're talking about the tri-band radios?
Um, yeah, some of the, the Gales Ferry ones that they put in for their grant, which unfortunately got denied, they're gonna try again, but those would cover any radio system that we're, uh, utilizing, so.
Yep, okay. Okay, thank you. Andra?
Uh, just another curiosity question, sorry, how does the meal stipend work?
So, if we work a twelve-hour shift now, um, if we get held over for six additional hours, which would be a total of eighteen, after we work fourteen hours straight, we would get that meal along.
Okay.
So, we do not get it on a regular basis, it's probably less now, uh, than it was before, where we had a propensity or a possibility of working a sixteen-hour, uh, shift, so.
So, in, in twenty-twenty, calendar twenty-twenty, Andra, um, we paid that nine, uh, ninety-seven times, it, it showed up in the, uh, in the, uh, in-time system, so, ninety-seven times fifteen in calendar twenty-twenty, that's, that was the expenditure. That's, that's what it's based on.
Alright, let me try to dr- druggle the load here, okay.
Thank you, Andra.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no other questions, thank you very much, Paula.
Thank you, guys, glad you're feeling better.
(laugh) Getting there.
There's a reason why we have you call in, right, when you go in the woods?
Yeah, isn't that something? Remember that, when you told me, hey, call and let us know when you're staying there, parking there? Steve, Steve Whaley knew right where I was.
Yep, that's right.
So. Okay, let's get, let's get straight away on the PD side. So, I, I, um, as far as the police department, I asked Lieutenant Kreutz to step out, um, because I do wanna talk again about the, uh, the proposed restructure that I brought up last year, and I, I, my, my sense last year was he was uncomfortable, um, while I was speaking about it in, in, in his presence, because it involved him, and, um, so, I, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up, but if, 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 it's your, it's your choice, if you wanna go over the other stuff first, the other lines, SIP, or how you wanna see that working. Um, but, I think, I, I think we, we've, we've kind of finally stabilized, if you, if you will, as it relates to our, somewhat, our staffing level, even though we lost three people this summer, we have two in the academy right now. Um, the, the overtime expenditure seems to have, like, le- leveled out, am I right, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, so, um, I just, uh, we're, we're gonna lose Sergeant Bailey, uh, at the end of the month, uh, the twenty-sixth is his last day of work. Uh, so I added a li- I added, I, I asked for a little increase there, knowing that he's gonna leave, and, um, we'll be down, we'll be down a person, a sergeant for a little while, um, and then we'll see where, where it goes from there, but, um, we, I, I, I so much appreciated the council and the committee's support about the staffing plan, um, that we brought forward a, a few years back to get ready for all these changes and all these retirements, so, if you can believe it, um, we've, we've actually hired ten police officers since I've been chief for the past five years.
Wow.
And, and retained, uh, seven of them, um, one, one, well, the first one that we hired didn't make it through field training, I forget if you remember that, um, and then we had, um, uh, over the summer, again, the officers, uh, Concasia and, uh, Van Overloop, who were new hires, ended up leaving. Um, Van Overloop went to a different department, and Concasia left law enforcement altogether, along with other police depart- other police officers, um, who just, um, based on the climate, were, were, um, not thrilled with, uh, what was happening. Um, and then also, uh, Ben Burbank, uh, ended up leaving and moving, um, so, so, um.
And he, he left law enforcement, right, Ben?
He left law enforcement altogether, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, we have the, our, our two, uh, recruits in the academy, Heidi Cronister and Taylor Kryeski, they're both doing a great job, they're, they're actually report every, mostly every day here on Zoom, they're starting to go more toward commuter, um, because of our COVID, of COVID situations, but they, um, they overstaffed the class there, uh, at, up to seventy-two, because they believe they can, they're gonna do it remotely, and, um, so they're, they're, they're both doing very well, and then we brought on Greg McDonald, um, who was a, a Norwich police officer back in December, um, to augment, so we're, we're really just down one body. Um, I was able, uh, I had a conversation last, uh, Tuesday with Gary Butters, he intends now to stay for a couple more years.
Good.
Which is good news, he's a great, great officer and a, and a great team player. Um, so really, we're just, we're, we're down one from our, our, our absolute peak that we've been at, at, which, which was twenty-four, right now, we have twenty-three, but it also count, uh, includes the two that are in the academy who are not filling out the schedule right now, so, um, that's, that's kind of where, where we're at right now. Um, what, one of the big, the big things that's, um, come up here is, is the Police Accountability Bill, and everything that goes along with that, um, even though the lang- the language, at least today in the judiciary committee, is new proposed language for use of force, but, um, the requirements are, are, are I, I put them all in the SIP, um, and I don't know if you wanna go over that, um, go over those now, if that, if that's just easy. Ian, can you, will I be able to see the SIP, um, SIP request up there? Um.
Just gotta find you.
That's okay.
There we go.
Yep, so, um, you see, uh, the, the, the Kalia accreditation reserve, I, I, I created a reserve fund for K- Kalia accreditation, because that's going to, that's required now by the Police Accountability Bill for departments to be nationally accredited, all Connecticut departments to be nationally accredited by twenty-twenty-five. Um, body one cameras, um, as well as psychological, uh, exam reserve, and I know I talked to Don about the, um, there's a, a new level of drug testing for recertification, and Don, I know, is gonna include that in his, um, in his request. Um, and Ian, can you scroll, I think there's like maybe one, one more, um, no, we're done. Okay. So, um, with, with all that said, um, when we, when we, when we move toward accreditation, that, that's, that's one of the main reasons, I've al- I've always believed that we need to split our, our our command staff into admin and operations, and now accreditation is gonna be a serious administrative project, that, that is going to be a, a major lift for, um, all of us in, in the department. Um, so, I created two different organizational trusts, one on the show how, how we actually, um, operate now, and one to show how I propose that we operate, um, going forward after July, so, Ian, can you see those in the PDF at all? Uh, um, I know Marcia put them into, um.
I have the next cell spreadsheet in front of me that I believe Marcia is also working with.
Okay, I, I can, I can, but what, what? Um, she, she said, um, that there was a PowerPoint, um, PDF org chart, and, and if you can't pull it up, I have, um, copies.
It's in clear ground.
It's in clear ground?
Uh, if you go back to his department budget, Ian?
Oh, is it, is it your backup?
It's the very last item in the police operating budget.
I didn't realize there were. I didn't realize there were. I thought that, that was just the MUNIS backup.
Hi, Marcia, I didn't realize you were there. Thank you.
Hi, John.
John, going back to this uh new accreditation, um what do they hope to achieve?
Well, so it's, it's basically um, it's, it's a huge inspection of your operation and your facility and your vehicles and every.
Who is pushing this?
All right, so, so the, so the legislature passed it in Public Act twenty oh-one. And Connecticut's, has a few different levels of accreditation. One, one is called CLASP, and I know I've sent things to bill about CLASP because we're always CLASP compliant. And those are the standards that you need to meet right now. Um, and every year, the past two years that we've been inspected, which has only been effective those two years, uh we've been fully compliant with CLASP, the, the standards. Um, and Connecticut also has post-accreditation, uh which has three different tiers. And then CLIA accreditation is national accreditation. So um, CLIA stands for the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. So um, I went through, first of all, the state police have been CLIA accredited through my whole career. Um, as, and then we took Madison PD through CLIA accreditation when I was the commander over there. So.
So this does not anything new?
No, no, but what, what's new is that the legislature says everybody has to be CLIA accredited.
Okay.
Every police department because, based on the accountability bill and everything, all the narrative from last summer, the legislature wants every, every police department to be CLIA accredited.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so um, again, it, it's a huge project. It starts with your policies and then you, it's, it's a review of, firstly, you have to have all these different policies. And then it's a review of showing how you actually comply with your policies, and it includes your facility as well. We're super fortunate to have a five-year-old building right now because there are departments that have cell blocks and, you know, bar, you know, with bars and all, all these things that are, are not gonna meet the standards, um unless it's major construction. So we're, we are, again, I can't say enough, like, we're built for accreditation. Um, we're, we're in real, we're in really good shape facility-wise. Um, policy-wise, we're, we're gonna need some work to get to that standard for sure. It's all, all different things, including things in personnel. There's, there's all, it, it just runs the gamut. Um, and so, and, and one, one of the places that we're, we're running into issues in, in, in our operation really is, it's the, it's the breadth of the duties that the lieutenant and I try to split. And there's a, there's a, a drop-off in some areas where you get to um the level below him in, in this um configuration in our, our, our first draft here. Um, so it's basically, in the chain of command, it would be six sergeants and then all dispatch answering to him. And he's not there twenty-four-seven and neither am I. So I've, I've modified my, my schedule a little bit to come in a little bit later and stay, stay later. So I'm there into the evening shift to try to deal with issues and problems that, that might happen to come up. But in, in general, I think we're, we're just, we're, we're not structured to be able to effectively manage operations around the clock. That's, that's my, uh, and, and sometimes we don't, we, we don't get the notifications that we should get of situations that have happened. And then when we come in in the morning, we're up against, trying to uh play catch-up. So um, I, I don't know if you have any questions on the first chart, but one, one of the things that we did do was um, we have Sergeant Bailey doing double duty. He's actually a detective supervisor as well as a patrol, a patrol supervisor. And he, the animal patrol officer is also answer to him. Um, we're gonna lose him uh in fifteen days. And um, so what, what I, what I was looking to propose, if you wanna go to the next slide, is um a split that adds that, that um makes the executive officer a, an administrative officer and makes the op, uh, makes the lieutenant's position an operations officer. So when the, when the PD went independent, uh the agreement between the union and the town that says, if you add a position that's above lieutenant, then lieutenant goes back into the union. So um that complicates things a little bit. I've talked to Don about it a whole, a whole bunch of times. And um it's in an MOU, so it's something that we have to, we'd have to, have to deal with. So um, is there, is that Excel spreadsheet in there, Ian, if you know that, that had the? Well, I, I, I ended up doing it, doing a draft like I did last year of the budget with a captain. And it's, it's in an Excel spreadsheet. Um, you don't have it? Okay. Anyway, what it basically does is you'd, you'd end up removing um one, removing a full sergeant salary because lieutenant would take, lieutenant would be a union member, would take, would take over the, the sergeant. The lieutenant by contract has to be, when it was a, a union position, had to be ten percent above step one sergeant. So I put that number in there uh as well. So that's, that lieutenant um salary would go to ninety-one four thirty-four, ninety-one four thirty-four, which would be a reduction from what Lieutenant Croats makes as of July first of thirty-six sixty-six. And then um Lieutenant Croats is on a contract as an individual. And there probably has to be further negotiation if he, if he ended up getting promoted as to what that would look like. Um, so I, I can't speak to what his, his salary would be, but I would, I would say it would be uh a bit above that ninety-five thousand dollar mark that we're going to on July first. Um, and then if you look back to the org chart again, um what, what that allows for is um the lieutenant to basically manage patrol with five sergeants and then all his patrol officers. And the, the captain to oversee the support services, which is detectives, dispatch and animal control, as well as all the myriad duties that he has already, which is, is, it's all the charge. And he'd have, he'd have to pull together the accreditation team. We, we do it together. But that's gonna be a huge, a huge lift. And I don't know, based on what, how we're, how we're set up now, how, how you would accomplish it without either, you know. Most of the problems have an accreditation manager. They have somebody just dedicated to that every time it comes up. It's, it's a three-year cycle and then three, three-year reaccreditation. Um, and I've, I've believed ever since we've been operating for the past, since I've been here for five years now, a couple of years in, I realized that we, we need to make a change here. Um, as far as splitting out, again, administration and operations, because he and I run around like one, one arm paper hangers all the time and just trying to put out fires. And um if we hadn't, if we, if, if we had a patrol commander that was a lieutenant and was a union member as well, I think that would smooth a lot of things out for us as it relates to operations. Um, our sergeants are, you know, improving, getting better. We still have some, some issues there. I think that's a leftover from the Resident Trooper program, to be quite honest. And um when there, when there wasn't um responsibility and accountability. And I, I think we still have some work to do there. And some of them are cycling out toward retirement, got new people coming. I, I think, I think the team, the, the people that we have in the team right now, uh we have a bright future really coming, coming up uh for us. It's just um, this, this one, this one change is really what, what I would propose as, as a um, as a really important and really, the most important thing I could accomplish, I think, here um as a chief. That, this would solve a lot of issues. This would, this, this is, this is, this is the, this would be my number one, my, my number one priority.
John, where is this listed?
So can you see the second?
Okay, it's got you, then it's got the lieutenant, then it's got public safety employees, administrative wages.
Oh, if you scroll down. Oh, you're on the paper. This is backup on the ClearGrove.
Okay.
It's okay. I, I, so.
So you have that in there?
Yes, it's attached as backup.
Okay.
At the bottom.
There is a second page to that. Is that what you were looking for, John?
I, I don't think so. I, I, Marcia, I think the um, again, me not being familiar with ClearGrove, when I, when I went into the, to the mayor's, the meeting with the mayor, we, we did discuss this. Um, and again, I had, I had it on a, on a Excel, on Excel spreadsheet. So I don't know if it made the trip.
No, I don't think so. But if you send that to me, if you can email that to me, I'll attach it in ClearGrove.
I, I will.
I'm gonna add it into you right now.
So Chief, what's in the, in the proposed budget? It, it looks to me as if we have the, the current structure reflected in the, in the proposed budget. Is that true?
The current structure is, is what the budget is, is, is and has always been, or at least has been since I've been here. Um, and again, the other, the other thing was uh the, the uh proposed amendment is in a draft form, in an Excel spreadsheet. So you can kind of see the numbers. I've, I've talked to Don uh about this on numerous occasions. We have the um job descriptions in draft form.
Okay.
We have um, and, and I think it would, it would just take a, a, a small amount of negotiation as it relates to um Kenny, Kenny Croats and the union itself. But the, the precedent is already there um as it relates, because it's, it's in the MOU.
Yep.
So as far as what the lieutenant, you know, what, what the lieutenant would get paid, that the lieutenant would be a union member, et cetera.
You asked for.
We talked about it last year. We did, yes. Yeah. And, and now, again, with the police accountability bill, it's, it's just become more and more glaring to me, along with some other situations that we've had come up in the, in the operations that.
So if Kenny becomes a captain, then who becomes a lieutenant? Is that open for?
That'll be open to the, to the officers who qualify, which I believe would be, uh, in the description would be two, two years as a sergeant, yeah?
All right, that's okay.
Yep.
So you have to have somebody in mind?
I, I think I have the people that could do it. Yes, yes, sure.
So then would that be, would have to hire somebody on the other end?
Well, I, I don't believe so, only because um the, the MOU doesn't, doesn't specifically say that. It just says that if, if, if Ledger hires somebody in between, above lieutenant, below the chief, that lieutenant's position goes back to the union. And that's, that's what it says. So if it goes back to the union, then we, one with the lieutenant and five sergeants, that's, that's how I would see it.
So it doesn't mean an additional police officer?
No, no.
Chief, after Bailey retires, um who else is a detective with cadre?
Padra.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's in the, the division. He's the court evidence officer, so he's in the division.
Okay.
Um, but after, yeah, so I, I'm, I'm gonna end up taking those guys back for a little while as a release of direct supervision.
Right, right.
Because Ernie's um going on his, on his way at the end of the month. And he, he's, I, I can't say enough about what Ernie Bailey's done for this department. He's been a tremendous asset. Um, I'm, I'm sorry if I get off on a tangent, Bill. I don't know, I don't know if you um, if there was anything else that we, we wanted to like cover, but I wanted to use my time wisely and um.
Yeah. So I, I, let me see if I can restate it, uh just to play it back, Chief. Um, so in, in this proposal, which is not in the budget now, um but, but we may need to think about it. Uh, right now, we have six sergeants. Um, if you move to the new structure, we'd have the same number of heads, but one of the sergeants would become a union lieutenant. And the lieutenant would move up to captain. Um, and, and then you would have the staff to split these responsibilities. That's the way I'm understanding it.
Yes, sir. Correct.
All right. Um, can you, moving off a little bit back toward the budget, can you talk about um body cameras? Cause we've been expecting this uh as a result of this past summer and the, and the legislative changes. So can you talk about the timeframe for body cameras? Uh, I see that they're in the capital account. So, so talk about that, please.
Sure, sure. So um we have a vendor, um WatchGuard video, which has been purchased by Motorola in the interim. But WatchGuard um built and installed our in-car video system, which is also been a, a real benefit to us. The limitation there is that, you know, if you, if the officer's out of the car, you don't, you, you don't necessarily catch video unless he's in front of the, the camera. Um, but the, the audio, uh the wireless audio can, can travel a great, a great distance, like um a quarter of a mile from the vehicle. So um, we, so WatchGuard would outfit, would, would be the choice, obviously, because we have their software, their servers, et cetera, to be our, our body one camera um vendor, because they're already our, our provider as it is. Um, so they have a um, two different levels of body cameras. One's called Vista and one's called V three hundred. So the quote that I have uh in, in the attachment um is for the V three hundred system, which is the latest software that they're, that they're gonna support. Uh, includes onsite server. That's how, that's how we store video right now. There are other options out there and, and as we talked about before in, in earlier meetings, um the cloud storage just keeps getting um more and more, I think, convenient or, and cheaper. So, but right now, we, we, this is quoted with a, with a server to support that video. Um, and I, I'm, as you know, I'm a supporter of body one cameras and have been since I got here as chief. And um I think they um, they, they answer a lot of questions.
Yeah, I agree.
Eliminate, eliminate a lot of, a lot of issues.
Yep.
The system that we would, um, I, I would, I propose that we purchase twenty-five of them, outfit the whole department, that each officer would have an individual camera. We'd, we'd need um three storage banks of um chargers, if you will. Um, and, and they, they, they don't dump wirelessly like the um, the in-car system does into the server. You'd have to, you have to um put them into the cradle, uh the dock, and then, and then the video downloads into the server. Um, the, the two systems have the ability to kind of recognize um the same incident, if you will, and then can merge all of the video from, from a single incident into that incident from the car, as well as the um, the body cameras of multiple officers involved in the situation. Um, again, the, the, body cameras are not, you know, uh completely foolproof. There's, there's all kinds of different factors, uh human factors um that go along with them sometimes. You, you, I'm sure you've seen plenty of video where officer's hands are out front of them or whatever and certain parts of the action get obstructed depending on what the officer's doing. Um, but uh, uh, all in all, I, I, they're, they're a, they're a great tool, I think. Because what, what they've shown largely is, is the professionalism of police officers um who are wearing them as opposed to the gotcha um scenario that um
Correct.
Some people, some people had hoped for, I think.
Yep.
And really what, um, it's, it's the state of the art right now and it's, it's a, it's a risk management tool and um it's required by the bill um by twenty twenty-three. So um, we, we, I think we have the relationship with WatchGuard where we can execute this, I think, um quickly um after July one and, and then um have our people up and running. The, the policy, uh body one camera policy recently got updated by, by the state. Uh, so it would just be a matter of adding that to our current policy about, about video. Uh, and that, that won't be a heavy lift at all. Um, we won't be starting from scratch. Um, but I think that, you know, obviously, this is the time to do it. Um, and then there's a thirty, there's a thirty percent reimbursement uh out there in bonding for non-distressed municipalities and fifty percent for distressed municipalities. So um, the ClearGrove request shows the grant, the grant funding. And then the, the outgoing costs, um seven thousand, I think it was seven thousand fifty per year is all um individual device support, um support fee. Um, and that, that, the, the grant will reimburse the first year as they, as they always do. And then outgoing cost would be about seven thousand dollars a year. and then outgoing costs would be about seven thousand dollars a year for, for the town.
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to make the numbers add up. The, the, uh, the request was sixty-three, four sixty, and it shows taxes covering forty-four thousand of that, and a grant nineteen thousand. But then in the, uh, in the mayor's recommendation, he supported the full, the full request, but taxes are supporting over only thirty-one thousand dollars. So I'm curious about the difference there.
Well, if, you know, um, I, I can't see the clear government now, but I know, I know they do the pie chart with grant versus taxes and all that stuff.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I'm looking at this.
So here is the taxes for the department proposed.
Yep.
Forty-four and nineteen, and then if you move over to the mayor's, it changes from that ratio to the thirty-one to thirty-one.
That's because, uh, the mayor, uh, understood that there was fifty percent funding from the state.
I see.
Oh, got it.
I see, got it. So, um, and I know, I know there was still some other discussion in the legislature, that's what some of the municipalities obviously said, you know, this is a, this is a state mandate. But as of, as of now, my, my, to my knowledge, it's, it's thirty percent for non, non-distressed municipalities and fifty percent for distressed. And OPM is really just starting to roll out that, uh, that program. I just got an email on it last week.
Got it, okay, so that, that'll clear itself up eventually, so thank you for that. Alright, um, should we stay on SIP or should we go into the expense budget? What's your preference?
I'm, I'm, I'm ready for either.
Okay.
So. Uh, veh- police vehicles, the ninety, um, where am I, in the ninety?
Ninety-nine, two-ten.
Ninety-nine, two-ten for police vehicles, so.
That was the department.
That was the department request.
And the mayor kept with that, yes.
Yep, so the la- the latest numbers at least on, on the police cars are the, the, there's no longer a, um, sedan base, a sedan version coming from Ford.
Yeah.
So, so everything's the Explorer base. Um, those are state contracted thirty-four, five oh one each. And we just got two, two new ones on the road, and they came out beautiful, thanks to Communications Plus.
That's before being outfitted.
Yes, correct, yep, that's, that's just the vehicle.
Yeah, it's just a truck.
Yep, and then the graphics are usually about five hu- five hundred dollars, which is a little, a little, uh, minor expenditure from MHQ. And then the, um, the outfit, we add, we added the, keep, the radio capable of the state system in advance of, knowing that we have the bridge, obviously, the brain in the, in dispatch. So in this, these last two cars that we put up, we actually have the hardware, the radio, the portable radio in there. So the outfit for, uh, one of them was fourteen, nine, ten. That radio being the additional expense usually cost about twelve thousand. And then, um, the other one was fourteen, nine, forty-four, ten, so it must've needed a little, another little piece. So those are almost fifteen thousand, um, for the outfit itself, which is gonna be, obviously, the cage, uh, push bumper, all the lights, siren, the install of the camera, the install of the, um, radar set, um, everything.
What's with the bells?
All the bells and whistles, yes. Um, so thirty-four, fifteen bits, so ba- basically, the, the Cruisers, the Cruisers costing almost fifty thousand, forty-nine thousand?
Yep.
Um, each and change, so that's, that's the ninety-nine, um, two-ten. And then, um, we, loo- looking at the, at the, the mileage report, we definitely have two, two, two cars that, that are ready to come offline, and we just had an accident with Cruiser fifty-eight, where, where Officer McSwain got slid into by someone at the bottom of Rose Hill. And that car was, um, already on a salvage title. Um, so we may, we may lose Car Fifty-Eight, which had, um, a hundred and eight thousand miles on it, which I'm not gonna cry about, but, um, we also have sixty with a hundred and forty, and sixty-one with a hundred and, and a hundred and eleven. So, so if we have to, uh, run sixty-one for another year, that's what we'll have to do. Um, if, if fifty-eight goes, you know, goes away, because they, they won't pay to repair it.
Do we have a fifty-four, or did we?
We do, we do have a fifty-four, and, uh, it's one of the, it's one of the brand-new SUVs. And I think Marcia, I think Marcia mentioned that to me, she said you can't take Car Fifty-four off the, off the road. And I, and I said, I said, we're, we're just replacing it with a new Car Fifty-four, so.
Good, good.
If you need to know where it is, you just check the. Just check the.
Just ask.
Hey, Bill, to the, to the young people, oh, you're not there, to the young people in the room, uh, look physical?
What the hell are you guys talking about?
They don't care.
He doesn't know, he doesn't know!
It's okay.
Oh.
It's, it's an old person thing.
Probably pull it up on YouTube or something.
Yeah, Car Fifty-four.
So, so, so what are we buying now, Chief? What, what's the new vehicle?
So it's, it's a, it's a Ford Explor- Ford Explorer base, um, you know, police interceptor. So, and they've done a really good job, they're all-wheel drive, they're, you know, they're, um, just, e- everything they put into them is, is, um, state-of-the-art. Um, so the, I, I, I feel like they're, you know, they're safer, even more safer than the, uh, the sedan version. Um, and we'll, we'll be left with only fifty-two on the road, which is, uh, the only sedan that we'll have. So, um, they'll all be, the Explorer base, and then we have the truck, which is our only four-wheel drive, uh, vehicle. And that gets used, uh, reg- every day, pretty much. Um, and that, that, that also's been, been a good asset for us, truck, so.
Yeah.
The SUVs fit all size occupants, which is nice.
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
Some of the bigger guys struggled in the sedans.
Yes, yes.
Couple of them were very big.
Yeah, the bigger officers were not, were not, not liking the sedans too much.
No.
I know one officer in particular that I've never seen him in a sedan.
So, just, just, I, it may be coincidence, but in the truck is, um, McKinney and Gorman. Those are the two guys that share the truck, so, uh, those are the guys that drive the truck, so.
Good.
So, um, any, um, don't put it down on the SIP, we got, um, the body cameras we went over, we had the CLIA, the CLIA accreditation we went over, except the, the cost on that. Like, um, I have an attachment in, uh, in the CLIA that gives you the one-year option, the, the, and, um, single payment versus three-year option, and I, I just put away four thousand dollars for the three-year option. Um, so I don't know if you can see that, uh, in, in that.
Who do we pay that?
So that would go to the, the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, they're, they're in Virginia.
Okay.
So they, they, they're the ones who review all your policies, and now everything's done through, um, uh, the software that we use for policy and, um, Power DMS, uh, which is a document management system. And then they send onsite assessors when you're ready for your onsite, and they could be from anywhere in the country, usually two, two officers, uh, ranking officers from other departments.
They should be able to see that now.
Yeah, okay, so, um, we're, we're in the, uh, you know, we're right on the cusp with one to twenty-four officers and tw- twenty, uh, uh, twenty-five to one ninety-nine, so we asked for the four thousand dollar, um, uh, to start the sinking, basically to start a reserve fund, to be able to accomplish this by twenty twenty-five. So, uh, and then this wouldn't just be, again, this is, uh, this is gonna be an ongoing heavy lift type of project, uh, for us in the department. But that's who you pay, and you pay CLIA, and those are the, um, those are the parameters, uh, and those are the fees.
Wow. Is, is that a, uh, is that a for-profit company? Is it a government agency or something else?
They're not a government agency, I know that. Um, they are a, a, a crediting body, so.
Okay.
Whether they're a for-profit, um, I don't know, they've, they've, they've been around, uh, obviously, I've been around for thir- you know, thirty-three years in law enforcement. They've, they've predated me, um, the state police.
Okay.
Well, first, first accredited in, in nineteen eighty-seven, and I came out in nineteen eighty-eight, so.
Okay.
And it gets changed, it's changed a lot over the years, the, the requirements, uh, for sure.
Yep.
But, so you, you, you sign a contract with them, um, you pay them, and then, and then the clock starts ticking. You do a self-assessment, you, so they tell you, you need this policy, this policy, this policy, you create those policies, or, and, and you enact those policies, make sure your officers are trained on those policies, you have them all sign off on those policies, which we, we do electronically, and then eventually you get to the point where they review all your policies when you have them all, and then they set up your onsite assessment where they come and they test you. Um, and it's a big deal, um, they, they, um, there's a public comment, uh, portion of it, there's a, um, a meeting, they usually hold some type of a meeting, and there's a place for the public to comment about whether or not they believe you, you, you know, you meet the standards, whether or not they believe you're a good department. Um, and again, you're, you're responsible as, as an organization to, um, house the assessors, you know, you know, in a hotel, um, that kind of thing. It's, it's, um, it's one of those, um.
A bit of a racket.
Yeah, it's, and, and there's, before the accountability bill, there were, there were twenty, um, departments in Connecticut that are CLIA accredited. Um, and now, obviously, every, everybody's gonna have to move in that direction. There are ninety-some odd depart- departments, if you count the state universities, and ninety-five, um, police departments in the state. So it's only about twenty percent of them are, are CLIA accredited now. And obviously, the legislature wants everybody CLIA accredited before, um, by.
Who's pushing this? Who's pushing this everybody mandate, mandate?
Well, this was the police accountability bill from last year.
Yes.
And who is behind it? The legislature probably doesn't know that much about it, but who's pushing it?
Well, the, the bill was introduced by Senator Winfield from New Haven. Um, he's the chair of the Ju- Judiciary Committee as well. Um, and that's where it started, and then it started, it went from, you know, things like Body One Cameras that we all agree with and that kind of thing, to, and it just, it, it's, it, yeah, it's, the language, it's, it's seventy-nine pages, am I right? Seventy-one, seventy-nine pages. Yeah, um, so the stuff that, obviously, that we're all still digesting and dealing with, we've implemented some, some things. Um, there are timelines on all of it, um, and some of it was from passage, you know? So I've updated our, our use of force policy to indicate that chokeholds are not allowed unless deadly force is au- au- authorized. Uh, duty to intervene, duty to report, all those things are all in our policy and have been since last June. Um, so, and again, I don't know if, if we're gonna have to change it again, um, but that, there was more conversation about use of force today in the Judiciary Committee, so, um, the language is amended slightly, but it's, it's here to stay. So.
Thank you, Chief, let, let's move into, uh, the expense budget, and, uh, see if we can run through our questions there, so, good discussion.
Thank you. I'm just gonna get my current, my current's outbill, so we can, uh, because we, we are, we're really doing quite well, um, budget-wise, despite everything that's going on. Um, so right, right now. The departments are right, right on budget, um, overtime's a little bit low, um, a little bit under right now. Um, I've made, uh, a few different, uh, transfers with Ian's assistance. Um, one, one place, one place we benefited from was, uh, training, training salary was underspent because of COVID, not being able to, really, weren't a lot of places holding training. We, we actually bought a, um, online, um, platform from Lexipol, which is a risk management company, to, to, um, get officers through required, some required training. So, um, I worked with Marcia and Ian to, um, transfer some money from there to help out with the spend, expenses that went along with hiring and equipping officers Cronister and Kryevsky are, are new, are new recruits. Um, so that, we did all that within budget. I, I asked Marcia whether or not she thought I should have, um, you know, should I come forward for, with a, a special appropriation? She said, let's look, let's look around and see what we got here, and we were able to make those changes, so.
Great.
It's all within budget. Uh, overall, the department's sixty-seven point six percent expended right now, um, and we're right on target. So, uh, we are, we are over on, um, holiday pay, because Sergeant Ravenel's retirement, I think, was, was a huge factor in that. Carrying, you know, forty, forty holidays on the books and then paying them all at once. Um, uh, along with, 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 whatever other, um, holidays that officers ask for pay for.
Yep.
We're eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars in the hole there, but, um, we, we have some room in some, some other places. Um, so, um, I'm pretty sure we're gonna be able to, um, balance on the fiscal year. So specifically, um, overtime, again, I worked, working with the mayor, um, I, I proposed three sixty, he, he went to three forty-five, I'm comfortable with that number, I think we could do it. Um, and then, um, again, the lieutenant's salary is, is in there, he goes to ninety-five thousand, and, and that, you know, that, that might, um, move a little bit if, if, if the, uh, what I proposed initially in the first conversation gets, uh, gets approved or gets some consideration. Um, or. Uh, DUI grant, uh, we, we reduced, um, from eighteen to ten thousand, because we weren't, we weren't using it because of our staffing level, and now it's more recently started, you know, to, to move up again, so, and we did get a grant, and it just, it, we just started to, um, put officers out on the road again with that, so I'm confident that we can, um, balance this year and probably not spend more than ten next year.
Good.
Everything else stays the same, OT outside assignment stays the same. Um, stipends I put, um, uh, bas- based on, based on usage, again, this is, um, meals. Same type of deal what you asked, what Andre asked about with, um, dispatchers, it's if they, if they go over, um, over their shift, they work twelve hours, they get the fifteen dollars.
Okay.
So, so, um, looking, just looking at usage there, um, is, is the reason for the increase? Let's see, you're right, he, I'm sorry.
How, how about repairs and maintenance?
Okay, so repairs and maintenance is the, is the building, and then equipment maintenance is, uh, vehicles. So, so repairs and maintenance, I think I might have borrowed a few hundred bucks from there, I did. Um, we, we first priced, um, radar sets, they were, uh, twenty-one hundred dollars apiece, but, but the ones that we ordered were twenty-four hundred dollars apiece. So I needed six hundred dollars, um, to buy the two radar sets that we had ordered, uh, in new equipment, I made that transfer there. And so we've also used repairs and maintenance for, um, we use it for, um, deep cleaning of the building, if you will, so if, if there's carpets, tile grout, that kind of stuff, that's not on, on the normal, you know, maintenance schedule for Diana, um, when she, when she cleans, um, steam carpets, um, burnished floors, uh, wax and burnished floors, that kind of stuff. That comes out of repairs and maintenance, along with anything else that's equipment-related, so.
So that, that's low, or it was low as of December.
All right, let me, uh, let me see where we're at right now.
Ninety-three percent, including, uh, encumbrances, which is very minimal.
Yeah, okay.
So we did, we did, we did pay a, uh, for, for a deep cleaning of the building, I know, um, within the past month, so that's probably why.
Yeah.
I was showing up.
How about, uh, how about telephone and fax, that's low too, where it was?
Yeah, so telephone and fax, um, r- right now is basically, is basically just the cell, the, the cell phones that the department, um, uses, and mostly everything else comes out of dispatch, so, um, just look at where we're at right now on that. We're, yeah, we're fully encumbered there.
Okay.
Yeah, we, it's three thousand, and we're, and we're fully encumbered, so we're at a hundred percent with the encumbrance of sixteen forty-four, sixty-six is encumbered right now.
So then why the reduction for next year?
Hey, I know, I know, uh, the LT, let me just get to my paycheck.
If you look historically, it's never really met the three thousand mark, so I'm guessing that that was just in an effort to reduce where they could.
Let me just see, I don't, I don't think that came from the mayor or from me. I know Kenny got us a little better deal, um. Let me just see. I don't, I don't think that came from the mayor or from me. I know Kenny got us a little better deal, um, with Verizon. But I ju- I'm just in between two documents here. Yeah. So, yeah, so that's what, that's what it was. It was, was, um, the lieutenant, um, working with Verizon, um, got us, got us a little better, um, package, if you will, for, um, unlimited data, that, that type of thing. So, that's what, that's the reason for the reduction.
Right, thank you.
Anything else? Um, let's see.
We had Regina add ten thousand dollars to her capital account for a computer replacement over there. So she's gonna start adding ten thousand on an annual basis. Given that the facility's going on five years old, um, we're gonna have to start thinking about those types of things.
You wanna keep running down the list, uh, Bill, or was there anything specific? We, we did, we did add a computer for, uh, to NetMotion. So if you see mobile data services up just a little bit, um, that, that's for an additional license that we, um, we, we brought an additional, um, computer, mo- mobile data computer onboard. Um.
Hey, I'm back. Sorry, my cellphone died along with everything else.
Oh, that's okay.
Oh, my gosh, Bill.
I was wondering, somebody, I was like, somebody just came into the meeting.
I was gonna say that. I heard it too and we're checking already.
Technology, technology's testing bill to the nth degree.
Well, I'm on like guard now because like Rock Tan's not here. So if something does happen, I have to jump up and shut it down.
I know. I heard it too and he was already clicking away, checking it out.
I saw the eight-six-oh, so I was like, okay. And the five-seven-two is like, okay, so somebody's down.
Yeah. This bum. So what, I, I'm sorry, what's mobile data service?
So mobile data service, we, we, we added another license for NetMotion, uh, worked with Regina and, uh, Justin to get our latest, one of our latest cars, fif- fifty, Car fifty was out, was not, um, connected.
Oh, okay.
So, we had, we had to add another license, um, and so that's, that was the additional, um, expense there.
Yep, okay.
Um.
About operating expense? That was low, probably not now.
No, it's, uh, we're at ninety-three maybe. I'm sorry, we're, we're, operating is ninety-seven point two expended.
Wow.
So again, why, I mean, it's a slight reduction, but what, uh, where, why are we paying for that?
I just wanna see what I, what I did, if I made any additions there. Yeah, so it started at sixteen-one-fifty and I added two thousand dollars to it. And that's, and right now we're, um, still ninety-seven percent expended. So some of the, some of the things that.
Okay.
Some of the bigger tickets that come out of that are, um, you know, printer ink and, um, DVDs. We, we burn a lot of DVDs. Like, the, now the court want, now wants basically all of our video from cars and our in-house and stuff like that. So, um, those are some of the supply things that are a, a little more expensive every, every once in a while. Um, so I had to, I had to be set up. Um, water is the same. Basically, uh, that's the water at, um, the water service to the building from WPCA.
Yep.
Um. Diesel and gas, um, that, that, that number, uh, was Steve's estimate. I always talk to Steve about how the prices are going and we see, we see what they're doing. So he said, no, push it up thirty-three percent, um, and start at fifty. Um, uniforms, I had to add six thousand dollars again for the two recruits, but we, um, took that from training salary. Um, so that's pretty much, that's, should be level funded at thirty-six.
Okay.
Um, other supplies is ammunition, uh, ammunition targets and stuff like that. That's the, we call, used to call non-instruction supplies. So that's, that's the account we buy our ammunition from. Um, sometimes some small weapon parts, but nothing significant. And, um, I had to add, uh, four thousand dollars to that for, again, ammunition for the, the academy, which is, uh, frangible. So it's expensive. Then, so what, what the recruits need for qualification is frangible ammunition. It basically disintegrates. Um, so, um, we don't buy a lot of frangible ammunition unless we have somebody in the academy. So that's why I had to add, um, the four thousand there so we could continue to buy other ammunition along with that. Frangible is a, uh, a, uh, special expense. Um, the new equipment, again, is just, it's just a purchase of a, a replacement radar set because some of them are long in the tooth. So we've started to cycle those through. This year we put two, two new ones in. I would, I'm just asking for one, one, one new one for next year to replace the oldest one. Um, that's the new equipment expenditure. Um, line item for my professional development stays the same. Um, and then I, again, I did ask for the K- um, the K-nine, the K-nine program, uh, a thousand dollars to reinstate the K-nine program. So, so with that. Thank you, Mayor.
No, I think he's still there. You can hear it. It's like a little fuzziness because he's on the phone.
I'm thinking. So, so it looks like it's requested, but in the version I have, it was not, it was not recommended by the mayor.
What's that? I'm sure of it. It is also not in the mayor.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the munis, um.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No dog.
Okay. I mean, that is, that is one that I was, was hoping to, uh, reinstate and have been for a few years now. Um, I know, obviously you probably saw that, um, Lambo just passed away. It was the last K-nine that we retired in twenty-sixteen.
Yep.
And, um, there's, it's just, we, we have, we have new, young officers who are looking for, um, engagement. You know what I mean? The, um, um, a mission, a, a specialty and that kind of thing. And I, I have some really good people, good young people that I would like to, um, again, start with one dog. And, um, there were times in the past where Ledger had two and three dogs, um, way back. Now, uh, we haven't had one since twenty-sixteen and now I, now I do believe that we have the people that would do a great job with, with a, with a K-nine. So, um, again, the, the search and rescue benefit alone, well, finding people, um, I, I could go on and on about what I've seen from police K-nines and what I've been on tracks with. Um, it's something I'd like to see us reinstate here, but. And I, I think that's the end of the line, is it? Or?
It is, yeah. Yeah. Thank you, chief. Answered all my questions.
I'm sorry, I, uh, ran over.
No, it's all right. I, I didn't even have to ask half of them. Right, Andre? That's right.
In closing, I, 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 I don't show up at finance a lot, um, asking for stuff, but it, um, this, the restructure of the department, I think, is the most important thing I can, I, I could get accomplished. I really do. Adding that one, that one split in command would, would do wonders for us as it relates to, um, reduction liability, en- enhanced service, which I know we, we already do a good job. I mean, I, I'm not, uh, um, I, I, I think that more direct supervision, uh, at that level would benefit, um, us in the, in the off-hours tremendously. So, uh, and then not to mention the, the accreditation project that's in front of us. I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need Kenny, um, and all the force power to get that done.
I hear that, chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anything else, Andre? Anything?
I don't.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. That'll be it. Appreciate it.
I try and help everybody that comes in and out of here.
Great job.
Well, it's tough because Marcia gets the number in there in December, but, you know, it's now a month later.
That's what I was saying, you know, it's tough.
I know. It is. It, it is always tough to bring on a new system and, uh, it, it'll be, and a lot of this information's gonna carry forward too. So to, to build it for next year, I think it'll be easier. We're gonna add more, uh, information. There are a lot of fields in there that can be helpful for the public that will continue to fill out. So, should be good.
Should I zip that, uh, Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah, can you send that over to Marcia? The copy machine down here only scans for the people that work down here.
Okay, all right.
So if I can't scan it to Marcia from down here.
You don't have a flash drive with you, right?
I don't, no.
Okay, I don't either. The other one's good.
Um, right now, yes, the fleet's toward the left.
Rock Tan might be able to.
I'll, I'll, I'll just.
That's all right.
Then, then you can work with it. You can work with it.
A copy of a copy, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you, chief.
Thanks, chief. Have a good one.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Mary.
Have a good afternoon.
Yeah.